Welcome to the Mid-Ohio Valley Public Forum Video Podcast. This podcast features issues of interest to the Mid-Ohio Valley area, mainly encompassing Wood County, West Virginia, and Washington County, Ohio. Right now with the coronavirus pandemic, civic life has changed greatly.
And this is an election year. One of the things that's really changed is that candidates are not able to campaign for office like they normally would. Generally, they'd be going to meet and greets and souping dinners, ice cream socials, they'd be knocking on doors, shaking hands. They can't do any of that now.
So many of our initial podcasts will feature interviews with candidates for local offices. If you're a local candidate and we haven't reached out to you yet, please contact us either through our Facebook page, MOV Public Forum, or through email at movpublicforum@gmail.com.
This afternoon, we're interviewing JR Carpenter. JR is the incumbent city council member for District 5. And District 5 is the area that encompasses downtown Parkersburg, the Juliana and Avery Street Historic Districts, and the strip along the flood wall going north toward Vienna. I think that pretty well describes it. So, welcome JR. We're so glad you could join us this afternoon.
Glad, I'm glad I had this opportunity. I appreciate it.
JR's district also encompasses my house. So with that, we'll dive right in. How would you introduce yourself as a candidate? Do you have an elevator speech? Meaning if we were traveling in an elevator and you had only the time between the floors to convince me to vote for you, what would you say?
Basically, I would introduce myself. I'm running for office for District 5. I am an incumbent. I take very seriously our roles as council people as protecting the investments and the tax money that is brought in and how it's spent. Would appreciate your vote. Will you vote for me?
So what is motivating you to run for reelection? What's the main reason that you'd like to serve another term on city council?
Basically, our work's not done here. In the past, we've had some interesting expenditures and how some money was transferred, perhaps without proper channels. Basically, I don't feel that we are operating as good as we should, as open as we should be. And I'm a big stickler on following the rules that are set for public funds and transferring of monies. And I really kind of enjoy helping people out that are in a situation. A situation being a personal situation with the city. Basically, as a councilman, councilperson, we are your first call. A lot of people try to contact the city building and they have difficulties getting through to various personnel for different reasons. And really, you just need to call your councilperson and let us take it from there.
What do you think is your wow factor? In other words, what do you think it is about you that when someone hears about you and your candidacy, they'll say, wow, yeah, I want to vote for him?
I really don't have a wow factor, honestly. I'm just a normal working guy like anybody else, but I'm results oriented. I like to see things done and get answers. Sometimes the answers aren't as positive as I'd hoped, but people have a concern, they need to be addressed. I am very proud of the fact that I've addressed many issues for many of our constituents, inside and outside my district, actually. And resolution on most of those problems is a very high percentage of correct, correcting whatever the problem was. And I really don't have a wow factor. I'm just steady Eddie kind of guy.
So if you're elected, reelected, what is the one thing you'd like to accomplish in your next term of office? Is there a city ordinance that you'd like to see created, or abolished, or revised?
There's not one thing. We need to work on getting our city more family oriented to get business in and attract people. Our loss of population is somewhat of a concern. And business is the key to getting it in, but we need families that want to stay here. We want them to move back. We don't want them to leave. And that helps us all with the tax base. I'm very proud of the fact that the council was wise enough to get rid of the flood wall fee for the Beechwood area folks in the downtown area. That was a very small amount of money income that was coming from people with fixed incomes and low incomes. And would look, actually, we're in an uncharted territory here with this virus. What we're going to have to do and adapt to in the future is going to be very exciting. It's going to be troublesome, but we are going to have to make changes. And I'm not scared to step up into the batter's box and face these potential changes.
How do you feel about compromise?
Compromise is good. There's time and a place for everything. It's good that sometimes somebody throws a pitch out there, if you will, that just to see how good it'd be. Everything that I have done in the past, I look at, is this good for the city for the next 20 years? What I'm doing now, and what I have been doing, is not a focus for me, for you, it's for our kids and grandkids. We have to build a better city. We have to do things to retain families here. So what's good for Parkersburg is good for all of us, not just the district.
How do you play well with others? And can you give me an example or two?
Do I play well with others? Yeah. I'm not, I don't live at the city building. Being a councilman doesn't mean that you're at the city building every day like some seem to think that's... We have not, as councilpeople. We're elected to watch the taxpayer money. Our big job is the budget, lining out the budget. The mayor is, with our strong mayor form of government, he is the administrator. He does not need interference from us. He needs to be, he or she needs to be free to run the city as they seem fit. And if they need more money, they need to come for us. I don't think that was really your question, though, was it?
That's okay.
What do you think your worst enemy would say is your worst quality?
I'm stubborn. I don't, when it comes to compromise, I'm very open to compromise that's fair across the board. But if there is no compromise, there's no reason to. Just hold your ground, and I'm a little bit stubborn there. Again, we're back to what is my constituents tell me and what appears to be the best thing for the city in the future.
What would you say is your best quality?
I also do my research. Unlike some, I don't just take what's given on a plate. I like to dig in a little bit to see what the ramifications are for... X action is going to equal Y results, or what the variables will be at the end, and if they're negative, then I have to go against it. If my constituents want me to vote for something, of course, I'm obligated to vote as I'm told by my constituents. My beliefs aren't really necessary there. I'm a voice of the people.
Political office holders are leaders. Describe your leadership style.
I get things done, and I like to get them done quickly. When I say quickly, I like to respond to someone's request and I like to get resolution in a very short amount of time.
What would you say are your personal core values?
Besides family, and wanting a safe haven for my family, a decent place to live. I respect loyalty, I respect honesty, and I don't know where else you go from there. Faith and family, and I love the people in Parkersburg. I wouldn't have this business that I'm standing in empty. I really do enjoy interfacing with everybody.
Do you know what your win number is?
My win number?
The number of votes you need to win reelection.
You know, you would have to ask somebody that is considered a politician for that. I don't consider myself a politician. I'm just a normal guy, a normal business guy trying to make the city better. I don't pay any attention to that stuff. It is what it is, and whatever comes out, that's the way it is.
What do you see as the main role of a city councilperson in a strong mayoral city like Parkersburg?
Well, to control the budget is our first priority. But after the budget is done, and it's set, and people are living within the budget, that's our... Being a councilperson is probably the greatest officiating job I ever had, keeping the politician in fair territory, playing by the rules. Our primary responsibility is to our constituents. If you have a problem, you don't need to try to call certain offices that'll never answer, or call back, or email. You just call your councilperson. Put the ball in my court. That now is my problem. I take it forward. And then I'll deal with the city, and then we'll see if we can get resolution in a prompt way.
What will you enjoy the least about serving another term in city council if you're reelected?
Boy, I don't know that there is an answer to that. Maybe it's with this virus, this could change how much I enjoy showing up. But I have never missed a meeting since I decided to run for council. I will never miss a council meeting, barring physical ailments. I really don't have what I would enjoy the least, quite honestly. I have been, I have been very blessed with a great district that economically is diverse. It's the most diverse district in town. We have some very affluent areas, and we have some fixed income and some low-income areas. We've got some areas with high crime and some areas with little or no crime. It's quite, it's quite a mix, and it's very fun and exciting every day. I don't know what calls will come in that somebody will help.
The flip side of that is what excites you most about serving another term on city council?
Basically, making sure that our tax money is spent properly. That is exciting to me. Going through the budget process, reallocating funds. There's a lot of things I would like to see changed, but that's out of the scope of our authority. And even if I want to, there's eight other councilpeople, and it takes five to change the vote. I've been on the losing end. I don't want to say losing. The citizens have been on the losing end of many votes because of the five votes cast, for or against. And I've been on the winning end, the end that's sustained and was put into effect. So that part is frustrating. You know, it's frustrating that you have to depend on at least five people to get things done. But that's part of the process, that's part of our civic process, and it's one that should never be skipped or ignored. In the past, the local administrations tried to bypass a lot of the checks and balances that are in our government system. I'm a big believer in the checks and balances system, and I do enjoy being a check, and I do not mind being a balance.
As a city, as a citizen of Parkersburg, what are you most proud of about the city?
I'm most proud about their camaraderie with most of the citizens. We all have similar complaints with what's going on outside of our area. We all would like to see things cleaned up. And in unison, I think we can work toward that. Again, we're back to a body of nine, where it takes votes to get things done. But I'm very proud of our downtown area has picked up. I'm seeing businesses pick up. I would like to see more residents downtown. Residents bringing in small business, small business feeds off residents. This growth process is slow. There's nothing overnight. But I am seeing improvement.
Tell us what political office accomplishment you're most proud of.
All of them, basically, but I would say the one that steps out the most. I did, you know, I'm going to go along with the mayor on this one. Saving the pension plan, switching into a municipal plan. Doesn't, it will save us in the long term, and we're back to our generations past. The fire stations, Councilman Mike Reynolds and I were instrumental on stopping paying money to fix these old stations. And under Mayor Colombo's internship as mayor, we proceeded to start getting these fire stations replaced. This is something we need in our community. Removing the flood wall, the unfair tax on the fixed income people in certain areas. The flood wall fee, it brought in $80,000, but yet it protects the entire city and being paid for by a small group of people on fixed and low income, retirees, basically, who sometimes have to make choices. With, they don't need to be burdened with tax. I was happy, and I think the Beechwood residents were very happy to see that lifted. It is a small amount of money in a $33 million budget. And, but it will help the citizens. And then the real cost of the flood wall is finally being distributed amongst the people of the city. It's protecting our emergency services, our hospitals, our city building, our 911, our police stations are all affected by the flood wall. And our insurance costs would be appreciably higher if it was not there. So for an insignificant amount of, I'm happy to see that fee get dissolved.
Tell us...
Back up. I almost thought about Quincy Park, the steps. We had some issues with previous council. Again, I was not in the majority vote. To sell part of the property beside the steps, which was donated to the city to be part of the park with the steps. I could not stop the sale, but we have since dedicated the steps and the property on the other side as a park designation, which means it can never be sold. So, very happy about that as well.
Tell us about the toughest issue you had to handle while you were serving as a council member.
The toughest issue? And I know you're thinking the MDO, but that probably was not it. The toughest issue since I've been a councilman was during Zipper Gate and in the... And the, I was the president of council at that moment, and it was a very trying time for everyone. And we're happy to see it resolve itself.
You touched on this a little, but maybe you can expound how you see city council, the job changing in the post-COVID-19 world?
This is uncharted territory for the city and for council. There's going to be some changes coming up, at least in the interim, until this virus is eradicated or there is a antidote. We've been experimenting, and our first meeting online was very poorly received. It was not done very well. This last meeting was a much, it was another step up. It was much better. I have concerns with the public forum. You know, there was no one showed up at the last meeting. We had the conference room set up. I'm not sure how long this is going to operate, or when we can all go back to the same room to see face to face. Let's face it, if you're not face to face, you can't see the emotion. You can't see, you can't see what's, you can only hear the words on a speaker. I like to see the faces. I like to see the commitment, you know, the emotion that comes through. That helps people make decisions. We're going to have to play with that. There's not an answer right now. And until we get more feedback and try this some more, I don't have an answer for that. This is probably one of the most challenging things at this point, is trying to protect our public forum so that we can hear from people timely.
So with that, we'll move into the hot seat. These are a list of potential hot-button issues that have arisen at some point over the last term. One of us, or both of us, have been present at nearly every single city council meeting since the current council was sworn in. We've noticed that a lot of what the council does is routine and not of a whole lot of interest to the public. We've also noticed that a lot of the issues that have come up to council have been dealt with, not controversial. They have been resolved by a unanimous or close to unanimous votes.
But there have been several issues that were what we're characterizing as hot-button issues, where the issue generated a lot of interest from the public, or the city council itself was divided on the issue. And so we'd like to take a few minutes and run through these and just get a quick take on them.
So for this purpose, we'll use a support, not support, or a support with changes format. Here we go. The non-discrimination ordinance.
Okay. I don't have an issue with this at all. That issue got cloudy. That was council's fault that evolved to the scope it did. That was our fault as council people. Had this been dealt with when it first came up initially, yes or no, it would have been over. But instead, a few people on this council decided they wanted to try to delay it, and it would go away. I was present at that year as well, and my advice was no, this needs to be dealt with now. Yes or no, it makes no difference. We need to get through this. But again, the votes prevail to try to delay this to thinking it will go away. It doesn't go away. We allowed, we allowed an issue become a volcano because of our inaction initially. That was our fault. Am I for...
Oh, sorry. Motorized bicycle ban.
I do not like these bicycles. They're very loud, they're obnoxious, and a few are ruining it for the many. But I cannot see, as it was originally legislated, to confiscate them if they get pulled over. This is America. We, this is, this is not a dictator state. Taking someone's personal property needs due process. And without due process, that we're accustomed to in this country, I can't, I can't actually say yes. I do not care for the bikes personally. I see no harm for people using them for work. You mentioned compromise. I'm sure there's room for some compromising on this issue. But I cannot stand here and look anybody in the eye and say, I am for confiscating personal property because they don't have a driver's license. Or, you know, on a one-time basis. You can't do that. That's wrong. And where does it stop? The electric bikes coming in with the more affluent neighborhoods would have to go under the same legislation. So for the reason of confiscation of a bike without going through due process, the answer is no.
Raising city fees for trash collection, fire, and police protection.
I have been against raising city fees. One of the reasons I became a councilman was the user fee. When it came in, I went down to the city building. I stood up in the public forum, as many of you have, and I asked the simple question, what is the administration? And I'll preface this with a little bit of the history. St. Joseph Hospital was sold. It was coming off the tax books, as I recall, to the tune of $1.2 million in tax revenue we were losing. So this fee came into play. And I had to go up, and I disagree with the fee. I see the purpose of it. I stood up at the public forum, and I asked the administration, what are you doing to offset these costs? I mean, let's face it, the city has a history of coming to us. They don't want to manage. They come to us when there's a, there's a problem, a hiccup in the income. And I will not vote for any additional fees with this COVID-19. I'll tell you that right now. This is time to manage. It's time for people to step up, be professional, and manage the city. And there's going to be hard choices on there, part two. You can't skate along and keep asking us citizens to put your bill because you won't manage. That started it. I got interested. I got elected. I have been against any fees, additional fees, since the inception. The police and fire fee, I voted against. I think I did, I'm pretty sure. But no, I'm not a big fee guy. I'm a big guy in the administration, whomever it may be, managing what they've got, just like any independent businessman has to do with your income. You can't just keep pulling income out of the air by tacking on more fees. One thing that Mr. Joyce has done that I'm very proud of is the trash department was always just a regular entity. It's now what's called an enterprise fund, meaning all the cash, all the money raised through the trash fee can't be used for anything but trash, for its cost, its equipment, its labor. What that does is the money they accumulate, when it comes to buying new equipment from the trash department, they have that income in that fund. And that protects you and I as consumers from any price increases in a trash fee. Over time, that fund should be self-sustaining. And that, we should not see any increases in trash fees, at least. I don't know how long I'll be alive, but at this rate, you should never see an increase in trash fee. The police and fire, I doubt seriously you'll ever see go up again. But no, I am against additional fees of any type.
Okay. Financial support for Parkersburg Homecoming and other civic events.
I am very much for support of the Parkersburg Homecoming. This is the one function that ironically, the city doesn't get much involved in other than physical location. And it's the one event that people can come to that's low-cost for families. It's a great time. And those type of functions are what brings life into downtown Parkersburg, wherever it's held. I am, again, I am, those type of functions that bring people into downtown helps the city downtown. It helps the little businesses. As a businessman downtown, I can tell you, it helps tremendously, which increases the BNO, which increases all the money that we get to pay back to the city.
The fireworks ban.
The fireworks have always been banned. That's never changed. You're not allowed to shoot fireworks in the city of Parkersburg by ordinance for years and years and years and years and years. However, the police department is lax at these special occasions, and rightfully so. I'm not calling them out, saying they're doing wrong. July 4th, certain occasions, they turn a blind eye. Not a blind eye. They're accommodating fireworks at July 4th and special occasions. But again, by ordinance, you're not allowed to shoot fireworks off in the city of Parkersburg ever.
Splash pad project. Splash pad project.
I'm sorry?
Splash pad project.
Yes. Very disappointing. I am happy to see the splash pad. I'm disappointed in what it's morphed down into. When it started, I was a councilman with the planning. We were talking about a water park. And somehow the price went up and the amendments went down. You know, there's nothing there for a teenage children, but this is fine. We still have Southwood Park we can develop and add more older people's interest rides. We have a nice slide over at Southwood already. The splash pad, again, I was very much for. It's family oriented. It's something that we should be proud of. It was not what was intended as when I was a councilman talking about it the last term. It's been brought down to a pad from a park. But we have it.
A social media or code of conduct policy?
I think you remember, we had something that could have been a social media code of conduct pass that was signed by all the council people but me. It would have been a perfect policy had it not named a specific council person. Had it said councilman, I would have gladly signed it and that could have been adopted as a social media policy. But it was aimed at one specific person and I refused to sign it because that means that I agree or disagree with his statement. That should have just said council people's statements, period, not a specific incident. Then, I am not against the social media policy. I don't have social media per se. And that's why I'm grateful you guys are doing this. You know, I have a restaurant. When people want to get ahold of me, I have a work number. I have a home cell phone number. I'm out and about and you can always reach us through the city clerk. I, I don't surf. Or whatever you call it on the internet, looking for things to say or do. You know, face-to-face access most of the day down here at my restaurant. And if it's important, please come down. I'll make time. You can sit in the kitchen while I cook if it's that important. And other than lunchtime, of course, when I'm real busy. But I always return calls. You know, people call me. I'm very proud of the fact that I don't leave anybody in the lurch for any reason. But other hot buttons. I'm sorry, I'm digressing into a sales pitch. Elevator speech.
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
Pardon me?
Dumpster fencing and cleanup.
Dumpster diving?
Fencing, fence.
I thought we've already passed legislation or did not pass legislation on that.
Right. These are things that have come up in the past that may or may not come up again, which is why we're covering them.
Well, you know what, the messes, and I think that that legislation was targeted at certain people. The trouble with certain businesses that have a problem is you can't pass legislation for everybody off a few. We need to address the few through code and not necessarily through legislation for the entire city. However that passed, I was comfortable with it. I do not remember exactly how it passed. I think there was a lot of give and take compromise on that.
Residential property cleanup.
Residential property cleanup. You told me like code enforcement? Absolutely. You know, I think, well, that goes back to your fence. If I'm not mistaken, that ordinance also had fencing around your yard. If you had trash. I was a perpetrator of that not too long ago when I was cleaning out my garage and taking the roof off. It laid behind my house for a good two weeks before I got it cleaned up. I wouldn't have wanted to have to put a fence around that since it was leaving anyway. It was a time issue. But common sense has to prevail somewhere, guys, you know? I can't put enough value on common sense and application. If we have specific hotspots for some of this, we need to address those hotspots, not in generalities. We need to address the perpetrators. We have existing ordinances on the books now. And most of them, if they're used and followed, would handle most of these issues already. We don't need to keep compiling new ordinances or changing a few words from an old one. We just either need to enforce it or ignore it. Plain and simple.
With that, we will jump to the wildcard section. These are softballs. They should be super easy. You've surpassed all of the trials we had for you. What is your favorite thing or place in our city?
My favorite thing or place is my recliner in my house.
Are we all welcome to use that or?
Absolutely. Barring that, I have a river lot along the Little Canal. I would, I am excited about the walking trails. Again, a project that was started some five, six years ago. The money set aside that have not been completed yet. Probably the most frustrating thing for me, you answered that earlier, is we start projects, we approve projects, we put money aside for projects. Yet nothing gets done for years. That drives me nuts, you know? I understand the pipeline and getting things done, but the money's sitting there. Ignore that, folks. That, I like the walking trails. I like to walk in all the parks, you know? I like walking in the neighborhood. Again, like the duratio, this COVID has allowed me to walk more in the neighborhood with the dogs. And, and seeing people on their porch and interacting at a safe distance, obviously. It's been fantastic. I'm seeing a lot of property improvements, you know, cleaning up the city is very important. And, and the Avery Street Historical District Designation people started doing that last year with these neighborhood cleanups. And it really made an impactful difference in these areas. Cleaning up the sidewalk, getting rid of the brush. Hell, we didn't even know we had sidewalks under some of that stuff. And it's just fantastic. The people want this place clean. We want it clean. But I am proud of walking around the trails and the parks. And I'm droning on for no reason. I apologize.
What are you passionate about?
In general?
Personally?
I am, I'm passionate about the improvement of the city. I'm passionate about following the rules of government to accomplish things right. I'm passionate about service. You know, now you're bleeding into my work life. I'm passionate about my job. I enjoy cooking things to order that people like. I like to see improvements. I like to see our money well-spent. It could be all over the place with this one, but I'm going to stop there. I'm happy to be alive.
You mentioned your river lot. What do you like to do in your off time?
Actually. This time we've been shut down. I've done some major construction projects. My hands do not look like a cook right now. You know, I enjoy working with my hands. I've built shelves. I've torn down buildings. I've ripped up two-by-eights to two-by-fours to build the shelves, all this at no cost because I already had the lumber in that garage and I had the time to do it. I enjoy golfing. Probably the biggest recreational sport. And spending time with my grandkids. That's probably the highest on the list. I'll give up a golf game if I got time with the grandkids. I'm a basic family guy, period.
So JR, what is the most unique thing about you?
I really don't know that I have anything unique about me other than being somewhat less than good-looking and maybe a little overweight a lot. Again, we're back to that wow factor. I just don't have it. I'm just a steady Eddie. I like, you know, I like to get things done and do it quietly.
With that, we've come to our soft end. We'd like to give you a few minutes to address anything you think we've missed that the voters need to know. Including how to get more information on your campaign, how to get in touch with you, donate, get involved, et cetera.
Well, thank you. I don't believe I need any donations. We spent all we need to. If you want to get in touch and learn more or talk to me, you can reach me on my cell phone, which is three oh four, four eight one, nine one seven four. You can reach me through the city clerk, Connie Schaefer, email. You can email me. That's JRdistrictfive@gmail.com. You can, when we're open, you can come down to the restaurant. We can talk. I don't try to hide from anybody. I try to make myself accessible. What were the rest of your questions? I'm getting off on a-
That was it?
Yeah, that's the end of it. Yes. And JR, we appreciate you taking the time to talk to us this afternoon.
Wait, one more. This is back. I remembered the other part of that question.
Okay.
I do not know what's going to happen in the future with this COVID nineteen and the social distancing. This is going to have an economic impact in our city as well, not just, not just for me personally, or you, or anybody else. But our city's going to have a tremendous impact. I don't know where that's going to settle, but I am concerned about it enough. Last meeting, I asked if we could start having finance committee meetings. See, you mentioned those issues. A lot of things are hung drummed, but if the committees are used properly for issues, we can do a lot of that. Back and forth and you're compromising and come up with a solution to a problem through a committee. And that's why you don't see a lot of discussion at the council meeting. Because in theory, we're already hashed all this out in a committee meeting, good, bad, or indifferent. I would like to, I, our responsibility right now, even though this is an election year and this is our last year possibly. We need to stay on top of our income for the city. We need to stay on top of our finances. I personally am a big believer that next year's budget we've already passed. We need to do a complete spending freeze of all monies that are going to be spent out until we see what our income is. And that would include, and unfortunately, that would include all raises, which that goes into effect in July first. I'd like to see us freeze everything that costs the city. And until we start seeing our income come in, start releasing it for raises, for purchases, if we have that income. But we have to be very diligent here. This is uncharted waters. You know, and one thing about the city of Parkersburg, in the time that I've been a councilman through several different mayors, is we're a me-too city. Well, it's time for leadership to step up and we need to not wait for what other cities do. We need to grab the reins for Parkersburg and we need to be on top of our finances diligently on top. We have to protect our tax dollars so that we don't come up with this, oh, we're going to need to raise fees because of this. I don't want to see this as an excuse when management needs to step in. And election year, maybe we'll get more, I'm not saying that we're not getting. That's not being done, but it's not being shared with us as council people that are responsible for the budget. I am, I'm still at this point, I'm seeing our finances going to be erratic, probably through first and second quarter next year, easily. And I'm thinking a complete freeze is the only thing that we should be doing. We don't spend a dime or add to our costs until we see what our finances are going to end up being. And as, and as they improve, we can start releasing those funds. That's all I wanted to share.
Thank you, JR. We, we really appreciate you taking the time to talk with us this afternoon and help the voters become better acquainted with you. And hopefully make good choices when they go to the polls because they want better information.
I really think what you guys are doing is fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And everybody, remember, wash your hands.
Yes, follow the governor's guidelines.
Follow the guidelines.
Well, I'm still waiting to see the guidelines for me because in reality, and you know this, Jennifer, that if the occupancy numbers that I'm going to be allowed as small as I am. If they can't allow me to at least break even with occupancy that they give me, I can't afford to open the restaurant. You can't make me operate at a loss.
And I think that, I think a lot of small businesses are going to have to face those, those issues. You know, the fixed costs of running a business don't change. Rent and power and things like that don't fluctuate that much. And I, I, I think that's a really hard issue that we're going to have to look at. And I feel for the small businesses most because they're our neighbors. And I'm a big shop, small shop, local fan and, you know, I encourage everybody else to do that as well.